Five more minutes to reach quorum, and I want to thank everybody for the patience. We'll start shortly.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2007. We are in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall downtown at 200 North Spring Street. We invite members of the public to join us at each of our meetings here in City Council. The first Friday of the month, we take our meetings to Van Nuys City Hall, so we look forward to seeing you down there. And if you live closer to Van Nuys City Hall, you can always give your public testimony via teleconference facility, and we're able to see you and watch you on television. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your city channel, where we are broadcast live each meeting, as well as rebroadcast in the evening for your enjoyment. We also are available online through lacity.org, which is our city's web homepage, where you can click on the links and watch live streaming web video of our council meetings. And we've been working closely with Mr. Parks's office and our information technology agency, and soon you'll be able to go back and see archived editions of our council meetings as well. Lastly, if you're not close to a television or close to a computer, you can always pick up your phone and call and listen to the city council meetings through Council Phone, service of the city, at 213-621-CITY. And you can listen not only to our full council meetings, but any of our committee meetings as well. If you are curious as to what is on our agenda for upcoming meetings, you can always get agendas through the City Clerk's office here downtown, here in Council Chambers, they're posted, and also online at lacity.org. You can sign up for regular email updates as well for committees and full council agendas, and those will be emailed to you at your home email address. Lastly, we want to ask folks to please note the rules of decorum for giving public testimony. We invite members of the public to speak in two different scenarios. One is for our general public comment, which is during each meeting for items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under the council's jurisdiction. Second, you can also testify on matters which have not yet received a public hearing in committee. All items that we consider either have a public hearing in committee or in council. So you'll notice on your agendas that some of them say items for which public hearings have been held, and others for items which public hearings have not been held. If you would like to speak on general public comment or for items in which a hearing has not been held, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the chambers and give them to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we will make sure that we are able to hear your testimony today. I want to thank the members of the City Council that are here pursuant to our council rules on time. Council members Gruel, Hahn, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine. That gives us nine members. We are awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Wesson, who I know is upstairs chairing a committee. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange are excused today from council meetings. So as soon as we have one more council member, we will begin the meeting. Again, I want to thank the council members who are here: Gruel, Hahn, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine. And call on Council Member Alarcon to join us, Council Member Cardenas to join us, Council Member Weezer to join us, and Council Member Wesson to join us as soon as possible. When we have one more member, we will begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Alarcon moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds. If there's no objection, those will be unanimously approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Mr. Parks, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And if I can ask everybody in Council Chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag? Thank you.
Everyone, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yes, let's go ahead and take public comment. We've got two cards. The first is out in Van Nuys. Donna Perman is our first speaker, and then we have Oscar Johnson here in Council Chambers. We'll go out to Van Nuys first. Good morning.
Hi. Hi, Mr. Garcetti in City Council. I'm not sure if Zuma Dog is there, but he is. Hi, Zuma Dog. City Council, you just woke up to Sleeping Giant. That's me, because now I know I really wanted to say, the City Council is here only to approve big development like the Grand Avenue project that costs millions of dollars and use eminent domain, and approve feel-good, do-nothing, hard-to-enforce laws like the ban on smoking in parks and beaches. Who's going to enforce it? Are the police department, who's needed to stop gangs, drugs, and kids' stanchings? Maybe our traffic department, who's watching to see if we drive correctly? Or are do the photo cameras supposed to do that, so drivers can be flash, not know what they did wrong, so nervous they can't drive right? How do you inform the public of that law in English and Spanish? Maybe we don't want to inform them, so we can get extra revenue for the city with smoking fines, extra money from smoking fines and parking tickets. People who got to put in a nickel where the sign put "This rickshaw's hard to understand" are too small. So that money can be used to send our City Council to Washington, and so you can lobby money for us or your pockets. City revenue, so we can give our City Council big lunches, so it can eat on closed sessions, so we can fine-tune these dumb laws, and vote themselves pay raises. Keep taxpayers who complain at City Hall from eating and drinking water, especially on Fridays, when you need two hours of presentations, hoping the public will go away, especially like Marion Fogler and Zuma Dog. So you can spend our monies for you and your CRA projects. So you could be kings and queens in your own little kingdoms, headed by our lovely Janice Hahn and our handsome prince Eric Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council.
Mr. Johnson, good morning.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Oscar Johnson, from Charleston, and working with the homeless on Skid Row. And I think that the homeless have been neglected greatly for the amount of money that the mayor and the city get to help the homeless with, and they haven't put spending that money in that direction. And you've got women's insurance and children's insurance on Skid Row, a very unsafe place they shouldn't be there. And we also have many unsolved murders in Los Angeles, California. About 80% murders is unsolved. And it seems though the district attorney don't want to step up and get involved in what the police are doing, because the chief of police is not performing his duty in Los Angeles. They're not doing anything morally, and he should be removed from his seat. But anyway, we have a thing going down at the Clifton Restaurant on 7th and Broadway that African-American men and women are profiling Clifton Cafeteria, and many of them saying they don't want to go in there to eat in Clifton. And when people go in there, they begin to be profiled by their staffmen. And we have a manager at Clifton Cafeteria, he'd be there seven days a week. And furthermore, I really think America should withdraw the troops from Afghanistan and Iraq and from all foreign soil, and remove President Bush, impeach President Bush, because charity begins at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That closes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, if we can run through the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is an item noticed for public hearing, a street-lady district ordinance in Council District 4.
Okay. We do not have any cards on that. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Next items are also public hearing items, and items 2 through 7. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to May 1st.
Okay. There's no objection, we will go ahead and open those hearings and continue those until the 1st of May. So ordered. Next items, please.
Item number eight, applicant consents to a continuance to April 20th.
Okay. We do have a card on that, but if there is no objection to the continuance, yes, Mr. Zine?
Make a verbal motion to refer that back to the Plumb Committee, and it will be back here by April 20th. But the Plumb Committee is going to hear it on April 17th, and the Chair of Plumb is aware of that.
Okay. So we refer this back to Plumb colleagues without objection, and we come back here by the 20th with consent from the affected party. Okay? There's no objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number nine is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to June 26th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item number nine until June 26th? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item.
Item number 10 is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 9. A motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Okay. Ms. Perry, do you want to move that motion on number 10 for the public convenience? Okay. And if there's nobody wishing to be heard, we'll open and close the public hearing, and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 11, and it's also finding a public convenience or necessity in Council District 4, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? I know Mr. Labange is at jury duty today, but I assume that's in consent with Council District 4's wishes, so I will go ahead and move that for him. There are no public comment cards on that. Any colleagues wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 12 through 32.
Okay. 12 through 32, colleagues. Any specials on these items, 12 through 32? We've already had public hearings on this. There is a speaker card on 17, which would require reopening that. Mr. Cardenas, do you have a special? No, okay. Seeing none, let's take the bulk of the items and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 33 through 67. 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 39, Mr. President, there's a request from Councilmember Alarcon to withdraw that from the agenda and refer that back to Arts, Parks Committee.
Okay. Is there any objection to item 39 being sent back? Seeing none, that will be the order.
And also...
Open and close the public hearings on all of these, so I do not see any cards. Specials? Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three? Mr. Parks?
Same one, fifty-three.
All right. And forty-four?
It's going to come around.
Okay. I'm sorry. Say that one more time, Ms. Gruel. Which number?
Forty-four.
Forty-four for Ms. Gruel. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues?
And, Mr. President, also on item number 66, the city attorney has some suggested amending language for that item.
And the city attorney is convinced it makes it better?
Yes, the city attorney is convinced.
All right. Go ahead. What's the new language?
In item number 66, should be amended to resolve the council wave review of the board action to approve the final acceptance of the gymnasium building and direct recreation and parks department staff to acquire the completed developed site in accordance with the executed agreement as amended.
Well, thank you, having just been at that gym yesterday. It looks beautiful. We appreciate the new language, so we will add that without objection in 66. If we can take up the balance of the items? Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Any other items? Return to specials?
Nope. That's it for the... That would just take council back to the items. Call special.
Okay. Colleagues, we'll now take up the special items, beginning with item... Ms. Gruel, is item 44, are we still awaiting the language on that? Okay. Number 53, then called special by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks, we'll begin with Mr. Cardenas on item 53.
Yeah. Thank God. It's a tight one.
Is it a session or finding? Is that on 53?
Let's go.
We want to send it to the committee.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. This thing's kind of loud. Okay. Item 53 is relative to an opportunity of first right of refusal that the city of Los Angeles has in purchasing a building that we occupy about 50% of that building. So unfortunately, it's not as simple as that, especially when you're contemplating the purchase of a building in excess of $200 million, when in fact, ever since I've been on the council, which is now just shy of four years, there was an opportunity where the city missed out at purchasing the building at $92 million. And then there was another opportunity about a year or so later where we were afforded another window to purchase the building at $125 million. And here we are with first right of refusal and the opportunity to purchase this building in excess of $200 million. At this time, I think it would be premature for us to take on any recommendation of purchasing the building. I think this is the perfect matter for us to send to committee, both the Budget Committee and also the Information Technology and General Services Committee, where we can actually peel back this onion, try to figure out what we should do here, and try to make the best decision for the people of Los Angeles. So with that, rather than have a discussion here, unless there's any kind of timing problems, I personally would be more than happy to accommodate having the Policy Committee of General Services convene well within the timeframe necessary for us to either exercise our right to enter an offer into this building, or to decline and then pass it up and continue to be a renter in this building, and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. If I could ask everybody, there's a lot of conversations going on. If I could ask the assistants of the sergeants-at-arms, if we could please keep the conversations to a minimum, or take them outside? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city staff to come up, CLA and General Services, please.
Just to remind the council on this issue, could you give us a description of the building and what we're basically analyzing, and also the timeline as it relates to the right of refusal and what is driving this particular time sequence? Could you hold my time, please?
David Pascal, the Department of General Services. Figueroa Plaza is two towers. Each tower is roughly about 300,000 square feet. One of the two towers was built in 1986. The other tower was built in 1991. The city of Los Angeles currently occupies about 300,000...
Thank you very much. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council.
Mr. Johnson, good morning.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Oscar Johnson, Sean Shilton, and working with the homeless on Skid Row. And I think that the homeless have been neglected greatly for the amount of money that the mayor and the city get to help the homeless with. And they haven't put spending that money in that direction. And you got women's and children on Skid Row in a very unsafe place they shouldn't be there. And we also have many unsolved murders in Los Angeles, California. About 80% murders is unsolved. And it seems though the district attorney don't want to step up and get involved in what the police doing because the chief of police is not performing his duty in Los Angeles. They're not doing anything morally. He should be removed from his seat. But anyway, we have a thing going down at the Clifton Restaurant on 7th and Broadway that African-American men and women are profiling Clifton Cafeteria. And many of them saying they don't want to go in there to eat in Clifton. And when people go in there, they begin to be profiled by their staffmen. And we have a manager at Clifton Cafeteria. He'd be there seven days a week. And furthermore, I really think America should withdraw the troops from Afghanistan and Iraq and from all foreign saw and remove President Bush, impeach President Bush because charity begins at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That closes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, if we can run through the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is an item notice for public hearing, a street line of district ordinance in Council District Four.
Okay. We do not have any cards on that. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Next items are also public hearing items and items two through seven. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to May 1st.
Okay. There's no objection. We will go ahead and open those hearings and continue those until the 1st of May. So ordered. Next items, please.
Item number eight, applicant consents to a continuance to April 20th.
Okay. We do have a card on that, but if there is no objection to the continuance, yes, Mr. Zine?
Make a verbal motion to refer that back to the Plum Committee. And it will be back here by April 20th. But Plum Committee is going to hear it on April 17th.
Okay.
The Chair of Plum is aware of that.
Okay. So we would refer this back to Plum colleagues without objection, and we've come back here by the 20th with consent from the affected party. Okay? There's no objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number nine is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to June 26th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item number nine till June 26th? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item.
Item number 10 is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Nine. A motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Okay. Ms. Perry, do you want to move that motion on number 10 for the public convenience? Okay. And if there's nobody wishing to be heard, we'll open and close the public hearing. And please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 11, and it's also finding a public convenience or necessity in Council District Four. And the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? Mr. LeBlanc is at jury duty today, but I assume that's in consent with Council District Four's wishes. So I will go ahead and move that for him. There are no public comment cards on that. Any colleagues wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 12 through 32.
Okay. 12 through 32, colleagues. Any specials on these items, 12 through 32? We've already had public hearings on this. There is a speaker card on 17 which would require reopening that. Mr. Cardenas? You have a special? No, okay. Seeing none, let's take the bulk of the items and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 33 through 67. 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 39, Mr. President, there's a request from Councilmember Alacon to withdraw that from the agenda and refer that back to Arts Parks Committee.
Okay. Is there any objection to item 39 being sent back? Seeing none, that will be the order.
And also...
Open and close the public hearings on all of these, so I do not see any cards. Specials? Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three? Mr. Parks?
Same one, fifty-three.
All right. And 44?
It's going to come around.
Okay. I'm sorry. Say that one more time, Ms. Gruel. Which number?
Forty-four.
Forty-four for Ms. Gruel. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues?
And, Mr. President, also on item number 66, the city attorney has some suggested amending language for that item.
And the city attorney is convinced it makes it better?
Yes, the city attorney is convinced.
All right, go ahead. What's the new language?
And item number 66 should be amended to resolve the council wave review of the board action to approve the final acceptance of the gymnasium building and direct recreation and parks department staff to acquire the completed developed site in accordance with the executed agreement as amended.
Well, thank you, having just been at that gym yesterday. It looks beautiful. We appreciate the new language. So we will add that without objection in 66. If we can take up the balance of the items, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Any other items or return to specials?
Nope, that's it for the... That would just take council back to the items, call special.
Okay. Colleagues, we'll now take up the special items, beginning with item... Ms. Gruel, is item 44, are we still awaiting the language on that? Okay. Number 53, then called special by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks, we'll begin with Mr. Cardenas on item 53.
Thank you very much. This thing's kind of loud. Item 53 is relative to an opportunity of first right of refusal that the city of Los Angeles has in purchasing a building that we occupy about 50% of that building. So unfortunately, it's not as simple as that, especially when you're contemplating the purchase of a building in excess of $200 million, when in fact, ever since I've been on the council, which is now just shy of four years, there was an opportunity where the city missed out at purchasing the building at $92 million. And then there was another opportunity about a year or so later where we were afforded another window to purchase the building at $125 million. And here we are with first right of refusal and the opportunity to purchase this building in excess of $200 million. At this time, I think it would be premature for us to take on any recommendation of purchasing the building. I think this is a perfect matter for us to send to committee, both the Budget Committee and also the Information Technology and General Services Committee, where we can actually peel back this onion, try to figure out what we should do here, and try to make the best decision for the people of Los Angeles. So with that, rather than have a discussion here, unless there's any kind of timing problems, I personally would be more than happy to accommodate having the Policy Committee of General Services convene well within the timeframe necessary for us to either exercise our right to enter an offer into this building or to decline and then pass it up and continue to be a renter in this building and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. If I could ask everybody, there's a lot of conversations going on. If I could ask the assistants of the sergeants-at-arms if we could please keep the conversations to a minimum or take them outside. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city staff to come up, CLA and General Services, please.
Just to remind the council on this issue, could you give us a description of the building and what we're basically analyzing? And also, the timeline as it relates to the right of refusal and what is driving this particular time sequence? Could you hold my time, please?
David Pascal, the Department of General Services. Figaro Plaza is two towers. Each tower is roughly about 300,000 square feet. One of the two towers was built in 1986. The other tower was built in 1991. The city of Los Angeles currently occupies about 320,000 square feet out of the total of 600,000 square feet. We will be moving the controller in to that building, and she will occupy about 10,000 square feet. And that's for the implementation of the new financial management system. The timeline that we have been provided calls for the city council and the mayor to approve the intent, a letter of intent to purchase by April 24th. We were notified by the owners of the building on March 28th of our right of first refusal to purchase the building for $219 million. After we send by the date of April 24th, and we can provide you with the timeline if you would like, after we send that letter of intent, we have until May 14th to get the authorization and approval from the council for what is called a purchase and sale agreement. And as I mentioned, council member, we'll be more than happy to give you the entire timeline in writing. During, once we send, once the council approves the purchase and sale agreement, that opens up a 60 calendar day period. And inside of that 60 days, we have 20 days, okay, to approve, as I mentioned, the purchase and sale agreement. And also, we are obligated at that point to deposit $11 million. Now, should the council decide not to move forward with the purchase of the building, in other words, the council decides in the final analysis not to vote for the approval of the purchase, the $11 million is refundable to the city of Los Angeles. Also, during that time, we will conduct due diligence. We will do a top-to-bottom analysis and review of the building to make sure that we are not encountering any structural problems or any facility-related problems. And on the issue of the structural integrity of the building, we have the Bureau of Engineering available to address that issue. And I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised, very pleasantly pleased with that presentation because we've got indications that the building is structurally safe. But we want to reserve that presentation for the BOE. The CAO's office is here, obviously, today to discuss, if necessary, how the building would be financed. And it's clearly our intent to make sure that this proposal is subject to the review of budget and finance and also ITGS. And we certainly want to sit down and have a thorough discussion with the CLA.
Ellen Sant from the CAO's office. On the calendar of events, I just wanted to add in, if the decision is made to buy the building and we do the debt financing, because we have to do a 30-day ordinance before we can close the bond issue, we actually need to get council approval in early May to do the purchase and start the debt financing documents so that the 30-day ordinance can run in time for closing.
So it appears that, as Mr. Pascal says, we'd have to go through a process of identifying the structural worthiness of the building, go through the process of the council vote. All this must be done by no later than early May in order to move forward?
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing I just want to clarify, you said that these two structures have a roughly 600 square feet?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, I'm sorry, 600,000 square feet. We now currently lease over 300,000 square feet.
Yes, in that building.
Okay. At what rate of, on the leasing cost?
The average rate right now is $1.62 a square foot.
Okay. Do we know how much the total for the 300,000 square feet?
We pay approximately $8.7 million a year to lease 320,000 square feet.
Eight point what?
Eight point seven.
Eight point seven. With the leasing, as we have it arranged on timeline, is there maybe an expectation that rent will go up or lease will go up as our contract expires? And I think it's in the near future.
Yes, we do anticipate that. Well, first of all, our lease at Fig Plaza expires in 2010. And we've already worked with our commercial real estate brokers to try to project what the market rate will be in 2010. And what we're being told is that it's going to be roughly $2.65 a square foot. So it's going to increase by approximately $1 per square foot.
So what is that on the total? What would that raise to 8.92?
That would probably raise our rent by about $4 million.
So it could be an excess of $12 million, $12, $13 million?
Yes.
Okay. The other issue is that with the remaining 300,000 square feet, is there a potential that the city could save by moving other lease operations into that building and save lease costs elsewhere?
That's correct.
Okay. How much is our lease bill currently on an annual basis for the city?
Councilmember, okay, about $24 million a year.
Is the 8.9 a part of that for Fig Plaza?
Yes, it is.
So we take that out, and what are we dealing with? 14, 15?
Yeah.
Okay, 14, 15 without that. Okay. The other issue is that, is that if we had access to that building, would we view that as being landlord for other leasing businesses? Or would we be looking at that for primarily the city to house all of that space?
Well, I think that's a policy decision for the council and the mayor. But we have proceeded to take a look at this opportunity on the basis that we would have the ability in the future, as the other leases terminate, to go ahead and move other city operations and lease space into Fig Plaza.
Okay. I think we asked you a while back, General Services, to begin to look at how the city should be moving, whether we should be building new buildings, leasing more buildings, or buying new buildings. How does this fit into the overall General Services proposal or direction that you're providing to the city?
Well, the CLA has taken the lead relative to the construction of a new building, and I'll allow the CLA's office to comment on that.
Yeah, there was a motion by Ms. Perry that actually involved a number of properties in the Civic Center area. One of those is the old Parker Center site. And we have worked with the Bureau of Engineering to look at how much it would cost and the feasibility of building a building to, at the time, the thought was perhaps even get out of Fig Plaza entirely, as well as the Garland Building and others, and consolidate here. I think what staff needs to come back to you with in short order is a comparison of building a new building or buying this building. And your point as to what we're going to do with the other half of the building is exactly on point. We won't have access to the actual leases yet until we're in the due diligence period. But we need to know how this building is going to fit into the overall plan for the city, how long it's going to take to get the private tenants out of there, and whether it makes sense from a municipal facilities standpoint to buy the Fig Plaza building. Other than that, then the debate is, do we want to be landlords? And financially, does it make sense if we're leasing half the building to own it and rent the rest? Or is this going to be part of the integral Civic Center complex?
Is the general perception is that the remaining tenants that are currently in the building are paying approximately the same rent that the city is?
Actually, they're paying rates a little bit higher because when we negotiated our first master lease back in the early 90s, the vacancy rate in commercial office space downtown was in excess of 20%. So we were able to really negotiate some great rates for the city and very favorable rates for us. But since that time, the market has changed dramatically. A lot of private sector leases have been executed, and we do know for a fact that some of those leases are more expensive than our current leases.
So the potential is that if we purchase this building, we actually could eliminate about $9 million of lease money we're spending as a landlord recover in excess of what we're spending to help us pay for the note on the building?
Councilman, there are a couple of things that I mentioned. One was that our primary thrust was to look at the opportunity in the future as leases in Fig Plaza terminated to bring in other city departments that are in lease space. But also, in doing, in developing this financial analysis, which we hope to finalize over the next couple of days, we looked at the revenue stream provided by the private leases and how that would impact debt service for the city of Los Angeles. So it really is a policy decision by the council and mayor as to whether or not you want to keep, okay, the private sector leases in that building for some limited point of limited time because of the cash flow that's provided against the debt service. Or what we, and what's important about that is that if, on the other hand, we decide to move them out, we still save money because we terminate the leases that are located elsewhere.
Okay. So those are all options that you'd be bringing back?
We'll be bringing all of this back to council.
Okay. The other issue is that, in the sense of parking, what is the amount of parking with the 600,000 square feet?
We have 1,241 parking spaces.
And so that's more than adequate in the sense of what, if we were all city services versus shared services with other leases?
Yes, we think that it would be adequate because it's a limited parking arrangement.
The other issue is, we can ask Ellen, could you give us some idea, as you've heard some of the numbers batted around, as to what could be structured as it relates to the city ability to move forward on at least considering purchasing?
Right. We're looking at doing MICLA-type financing for it. Our rough numbers right now, it looks like the debt service, if we were to buy the building for the $219 million, the debt service would be about $13.9 million per year. And so that's, and then that would be through the 30 years of the debt service.
13.9?
13.9.
And again, we're paying 8.9?
At this point, but the issue with the leases and the work that General Services is doing is they're going to be doing like a side-by-side comparison of debt service compared to the lease rate over time. And it's, you know, it's a production over 30 years, but, you know, hopefully with the consultants and getting good input in terms of what the market will look like on a rental basis.
Although this has moved pretty quickly, have we, were we able to obtain a second opinion as to the potential cost of the building? Is that, or do we believe that is a pretty set cost or fixed price?
Yeah. There are a couple of things that are going to happen between now and hopefully the end of the week. One is that we're going to have an updated appraisal on the value of the building. And secondly, we're going to have our commercial real estate brokers take a look at our financial analysis to make sure that it's correct.
Okay. And then, do we have a thumbnail of what we spent in that building as it relates to, I believe, what is it, building and safety there? As far as building out the building for them to accommodate the city customers?
That's a great question, council member. We actually brought this up in our discussion yesterday, and we're in the process now of identifying what the city's investment has been in the communications backbone, modular furniture, and also moving costs, okay, as well as all the other TIs that we've done in that building. But I'm being told that it could very easily be somewhere between $15 and $20 million on the low side.
Okay. So if we ever got to the point in 2010 that we chose to move to another building, we would leave that investment in place?
That's true, and it would have to be duplicated in the new location.
Okay. Colleagues, this is something I think that with the timeline that we have moved forward on and the awareness of this potential sale, and the only reason I was interested in this is the potential because the city is spending almost $9 million in lease money, which comes close to what the debt service would be, as we discussed on the last time this came before the council. And so, again, I don't have a concern of going to committee, but I would certainly like earmark to come back to council well in advance of the timeline so that we can get this before council with all of the information, all of the alternatives, so that we can make appropriate decision based on objective criteria. So if we can, Mr. President, if we can timeline that and earmark it back in council, certainly we can have all of this, these issues worked out in committee, bring it back, and certainly be able to make that judgment. But I certainly would not like us to be placed in a bind to where we're rushing in council and that we've, we've put all the time in committee and not enough time in council review. Okay.
Would you want to propose a specific date, Mr. Parks?
Let me ask Mr. Miller and Ellen as far as what we think would be most appropriate to get it back to council.
Two, three weeks?
Well, I think if it were back in council on the 20th, then that would, that would provide that meeting and then the meeting of Tuesday, the 24th, if it was held over in council. So it would give the full council essentially two meetings to debate this before we would have to send the letter indicating that we wanted to buy the building.
So a week from Friday, that would be, colleagues. Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks, should we be able to schedule committee hearings on that in the next 10 days?
And, Mr. Cardenas, could we work that out as far as the timeline?
Okay. And as I mentioned, Councilmember Cardenas and also Councilmember Parks, we will give you the timeline, and we may be able to do that within the next few minutes.
Let me ask one other question. Where would we pull the $11 million from if we were to go forward? Would that be MICLA or is that?
We would use commercial paper for the $11 million. Once council had decided to go ahead, then we would use the commercial paper. And then the MICLA we would issue later on would, you know, we would cash out the commercial paper.
Explain to the public what commercial paper, short-term?
Yeah. Commercial paper is money that we borrow on a very short-term basis, like for a year. And what we do is, that's how we start projects. And then once we know the actual cost of the project or we're ready to, you know, to pay an invoice, or in this case, you know, pay for the purchase value, then we would actually do a MICLA debt financing, which is a long-term debt financing we would pay off over 30 years. So the commercial paper is just a way to temporarily borrow some money until we can do the long-term financing.
Okay. So if we could ask the CLA, CAO, and General Services to work together, get this full package to committee in time for that review to council on the dates that Mr. Miller has articulated, then I think we can at least be able to evaluate the full spectrum of what we're going to be considering. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. We have two other speakers, Mr. Zine, Mr. Cardenas. Before that, we do have one public speaker card, Candida Morris, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'd like to thank Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks for calling this special. I was here when it was offered to us at $92 million. I was here when it was offered at $125 million. It is time to buy this building. I believe this is the building the DOT was up until recently where they moved into their own facility. But again, ladies and gentlemen, we could have made some money on this property. So again, it's time to buy this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. This issue came up when I believe I was on Information Technology, General Services. At that time, I believe we were spending $50 million a year on leases for different properties. And we purchased the building, which is now Public Works, occupied by some other city departments. How many other facilities in the city leased in the city of Los Angeles where we could push forward in some type of a purchase?
Well, we currently occupy in the Garland Building 220,000 square feet, and that's for Wrenckin Parks Department, that's for the Community Development Department, and the Housing Department. And as you noticed in our discussion about Fig Plaza, we occupy 330, we will be occupying as soon as we move in the controller, 330,000 of the 600,000 square feet. So in theory, we have 270,000 square feet available, and we occupy 220,000 square feet over in the Garland Building. And we have some other examples of that as well.
So you're talking about switching that to Fig Plaza?
Well, that would be one of the considerations.
And you mentioned the controller. Is the controller moving to Fig Plaza?
Yes, they are.
What happens with that location? With the controller's current facility?
Oh, no, no. This is the special team that has been put together for the implementation of the new financial management system. It's about 60 people.
But this isn't the controller?
No, this is not the office of the controller.
Okay.
She will remain in City Hall East.
And if we look around with other departments that we have control over with the millions? Because I remember the number of 50 million, and the Public Works Building seems to be working out well for the departments that are there. I know there was a problem, maybe Mr. Miller can, when we get this, discuss the parking situation, which we had a little problem with. But as far as other facilities throughout the city of Los Angeles that we are, we are spending this lease money on, because that's when I was inquiring back on that committee, we seem to be spending money where we can purchase and a better investment for us in the city. So do we have an actual analysis, other than the Garland Building, of what other facilities?
Oh, yes, 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 we do.
Do we have, do you have a number? I know we used to have 419, 433 South Spring. We're out of those buildings. We're now at the Public Works Building. But citywide, I'm not talking about just the downtown metropolitan area, but citywide, the Rampart Detectives, for example, are we leasing that property? Where Rampart Detectives currently located? Or did we purchase that, the old bank?
Oh, right across the street from the old station. We're actually leasing that property.
Okay. So that'll end when Rampart Division is completed with the new station at the old central receiving old central receiving hospital.
I would hope so.
But I'm looking at, so then we end up at that lease. But when we're spending on leases, because we need the personnel to be housed someplace, then we look at that cost of purchasing, and obviously there's a cost with the maintenance, et cetera, versus what we're spending on leases. And when I looked at Spring Street, we were spending an incredible amount for dilapidated facilities. So I'm glad that moved forward. But now I think we've got other facilities which are more in line for a reasonable working environment, but now it's be more of a cost savings than getting our civilian and our sworn personnel into decent facilities throughout the city. So if you could report back the number that we have citywide?
Okay.
That we have leased facilities, whether it be Animal Services or any other department that we have. And then, Mr. Miller, did we ever resolve that parking situation down at Public Works?
We did, yes. They've issued additional parking permits so that there should be more than enough permits for the people in the building. Also, when PD moves into their headquarters building, the demands after that on parking will be much less. PD has very high demands for parking. So there is ample parking in that building for the employees.
Okay. And I want to thank you for taking care of that because one of the problems is when they're forced to park those cars on the streets and they have weapons in those cars and they get broken into, then there's a lot of jeopardy for the public. So I appreciate you taking care of that. And if we can get that information back, and then we can look at a broad scale, citywide, we may want to purchase some other properties in some other areas. I just think it's a better investment for the taxpayers of Los Angeles, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I just want to let all the staff know that when we come to committee, we're going to expect detailed answers. And whatever questions we have, and if you don't have an answer to that question, I'm going to personally ask you why you don't have the answer to that question, when you could have had the answer to that question, what's keeping you from giving us the answer to that question? And as of right now, Mr. Parks, we do have ITGS scheduled for next Tuesday. So is there any reason why you, at this time, can you ascertain anything that you might not be ready for on Tuesday? If not, then we'll have another meeting on Wednesday. So as of right now, detailed answers to this potential transaction and this decision are going to be, the questions are going to be before you to answer to us next Tuesday afternoon. Are you going to be ready next Tuesday afternoon? Or do you need another day?
No, I believe we'll be ready.
You believe you'll be ready? Okay. I'm going to quote you, and then if you don't have an answer to the question, certain questions, then I'm going to remind you that I already let you know. If you need another day or so, let us know now. Okay? So you're going to be ready next Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I'll be ready.
Thank you. That closes our public, I mean, that closes our council discussion, and we will, without objection, then see that back, we'll refer back to committee with the deadline of coming back here by the 20th of this month. Thank you. If we can reconsider 60A, please, if we can open the roll on that. Mr. Alafon has asked for that to be continued a week. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And if there's no objection, we will continue that one week, 60A. 44 we now have, we have an amending motion that's been circulated?
Yes, it has, Mr. President.
Anybody wishing to be heard on 44?
I don't know if there's any questions, colleagues. This is on our OPDs in the various parts of the city of Los Angeles where we look. This is a little different than the PPDs in your neighborhoods. This is related to no overnight parking in those areas where we have sleeping and so forth. And I know Ms. Hahn, this was of interest to you. We had numerous requests for OPDs. And we didn't have all the criteria I thought was necessary. The department has done a good job in reviewing all of the issues. The amendment before you today, colleagues, indicates that for some areas, even though there may not be residential right in front of where you want to put the no parking, it could be a park. It could be an industrial area where there is a problem. And so this amendment takes into consideration the fact that people who may live across the street from a park, although we do not want overnight parking, by people living in some of the crime issues that are associated with it, this would allow, if there are residential apartments on the other side of the street who use that for their parking, that they would be able to get permits particularly for that area. So just wanted to highlight, thanks to the department, and we've kind of worked through a lot of issues, and we had a good discussion in Transportation Committee about this, and we'd recommend an aye vote this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We can go ahead and open the roll on 44, as amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuse is on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused April 27th to arrive at 12:15, and May 22nd and 23rd for city business. Those all meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, April 13th for city business. The motion is required.
Okay, I will move for that, and Ms. Perry will second. Without objection, that excuse will be granted.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Wednesday, April 11th to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
If we can have 61 forthwith?
Sure. There's no objection. Colleagues, we'll send 61 forthwith. Any announcements? Seeing none? Any adjourning motions? I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. We will begin with Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I have three adjourning motions today. The first is for Mary Schenk. She passed away last Thursday, April 5th. Mary Cecila Schenk was born in Orange, New Jersey on October 8, 1911. She was the mother of the fiance of Bill Robertson, who obviously you all know as our Director of Street Services. She was active in local politics and was an active member of the Essex County Democratic Party. After the death of her husband Max, she moved to the Tahunga area in 1976 to be near her daughters Joanne and Jean. Until her passing, Mary remained active in the community as a member of the Women's Auxiliary for the Tahunga American Legion Post 377, the Tahunga Elks Lodge 2098, and the Glendale Elks Lodge. In addition, she served as a volunteer poll worker in every state, national, and local election since 1957. Everyone, in both New Jersey and in California. I had the pleasure of going to her birthday party this past year, and it was quite a celebration. And she had a lot of vigor and life and was so distraught when I heard about her passing. But we do know that she lived a very long and fruitful life and gave back civically. And so I would ask all members, actually, with our close connection to Bill Robertson, and this being part of his extended family, ask that we adjourn in her motion, excuse me, in her honor. She is survived by her daughters Joanne and Jean, six grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren. My next adjourning motion is for Jim Alger Jr.'s father. He called the other day, was born in New York City on November 7, 1943, and passed away last week at the age of 63. He joined the United States Army at the age of 17 and subsequently served in both the Korean and Vietnam Wars. Upon discharge from the Army, Jim went to the Federal Law Enforcement Academy in Glencoe, Georgia, earning him a spot with the United States Department of Justice, Federal Protection Service, where he protected buildings and dignitaries in the United Nations, JFK Airport, and the Twin Towers of the World Trade Center. During this time, he was heralded as a hero when he rescued stranded window washers on New York's Empire State Building by reaching from the floor above to pull them to safety while the world watched from 60 floors below. Promoting through the ranks of the Department of Justice, Jim would eventually become the Port Director for Miami, Florida, where he retired in 1998 after 40 years of service to this country. He is survived by his son Jim III, his daughters Wendy, Luanna, Crystal, and Stephanie, as well as 14 grandchildren, and he will be buried at Arlington National Cemetery. If you want to join in that, in this, but thank you very much for allowing to adjourn. Our last one is very close to our family here in City Hall, is the passing of Eugene Golembeck, who is the father of my Communications Director. And unfortunately, we received a call from Ben last week while we were in Washington. He was born in Union City, New Jersey on February 28, 1946, but spent most of his youth in Queens, New York. He earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Queens College and a Master's Degree in Public Policy from the New School of Social Research. He served as Chief of Staff to Congressman James Shure, a Bronx Reform Democrat, from 1970 to 73, when Shure represented the 21st and 22nd Congressional Districts. He worked to elect Shure to the 11th Congressional in Queens, where he served from 1975 to 1983. From 76 to 83, he held senior management positions in New York City's Department of Environmental Protection and Transportation. And from 1983 to 1992, he was Assistant Vice President at Shearson Lehman Brothers. From 1993 to 2002, he served as Executive Director of the Manhattan Development Corporation, a local development organization providing neighborhood and economic development services to the Lower East Side community. His interests ranged from travel, photography, poetry, music, and contributing to the preservation of New York City's Jewish heritage. He was very, his special talent was as a mentor and nurturer over the years to the many young people who worked for the many Lower East Side enterprises he directed since 1993, as witnessed by more than 400 people who attended his funeral on March 29 at Riverside Memorial Chapel in Manhattan. And this is, Ben is the only son, and called us last week, and really, it affects you as a, as, you know, Janice has had this too, when one of your staff members' father passed away at the age of 61. And so he just returned today. I haven't had a chance to see him. I know he's upstairs. But he's survived by his wife Holly Kay, his son Ben Golembeck, along with his mother Estelle Golembeck, sister Louise Challop, and brother Robert Golembeck. And I think he was an extraordinary father, from what I understand, extraordinary civic leader in New York City, and our lives are all better because of him.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Thank you. Mr. Parks?
President, I have two adjourning motions today. First, Mrs. Evelyn Bronkow passed away on Good Friday after a long illness. She was the mother of USC's First Lady Catherine Bronkow Sample and a proud member of the Trojan Family. She lived with Catherine and her son-in-law Steven for the past 25 years, was an active member of the JV Chapter of the POE Sorority, a member of USC Support Group, including town gown and luminaries, and was greatly loved and will be missed. Funeral services will be held 11:15 Thursday, April 12, at the Episcopal Church of Our Savior, located at West Rose Road in San Gabriel. She's survived by three daughters, two son-in-laws, and several grandchildren. And also, this is a belated adjourning motion. One of my students in the 8th District, Brittiana Rene Henderson, was born September 1, 1993. She died Wednesday, January 31 of leukemia. She grew up in Los Angeles. She was surrounded by loving family and friends. She attended Crenshaw Montessori Academy. Her brilliance was recognized early by her ability to read at the fourth-year-old level in the third grade, as well as excelling beyond her grade limit to the point that she skipped the first grade. She continued at View Park Middle School, graduating with honors in June 2006. She was currently a freshman at View Park Preparatory High School, where she continued to be an outstanding student, even though she worked through her illness. Her passion was reading. She wanted to be a pediatrician. As a young child, she was very animated, with a great personality. She has very natural talent, grew up with a passion for acting. She booked her first commercial for Walmart at the age of four, and then she went on to do several other commercial print work and became a member of the Screen Actors Guild. She's survived by her parents, Jamie and Sherrell Henderson, her sister and two brothers.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. John Flynn, he died on April 4. His longtime companion Darlene survives him, his son Tara, and his daughter Vanessa. He was a longtime resident in the 11th District and lived across the street from the Rusta Canyon Road and was in the park every single day, walking his dogs and observing what looked right and what didn't look right. He was very active in the Santa Monica Canyon Civic Association Board and in supporting veterans' rights versus plans to commercialize and develop the West LA campus, and put also a thousand-square-foot FBI building at the corner of Wilshire and Veteran. He marched in the South during the Civil Rights Era, and he was also involved in the